All right, so we are at seven oh one, so shall we call this meeting to order?
Yep.
Call the order. First order of business is the approval of minutes. I looked through it, it looks pretty good. What do y'all think?
I make a move.
Go ahead, Kim.
That's okay, I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Right, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, next order of business, tax collectors report. I have nothing to report, we are in our new tax season, so it is literally the beginning of the new tax season. Now we have communications from the public. I see we have some members of the public on board, is there anybody that need to make a comment today? I see Meredith raising her hand, so go ahead, Meredith. You gotta unmute. And she's gone.
I'm here.
Oh, here she is, there she is, okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Meredith, I'm at One Juds Bridge Road in Roxbury. I'm just coming to you guys tonight after seeing the Fourth of July weekend at Hodge Park, which is on sixty-seven in Roxbury. I understand that Hodge Park used to be a part of our town. We used to manage it, maintain it. It would be residents only, since I've been in town for at least sixteen, almost seventeen years. And I know a couple of years ago, Russ probably would know more than I do, but the town turned it over to the state to maintain it and take care of it. After this weekend, it was just packed to the brim, driving by there. There were cars onto sixty-seven parked, little kids running on sixty-seven, a bunch of out-of-town guests coming to use the state park, if you would call it. They were parked all the way in there. The problem that I have is not only the safety, but the amount of trash that is left behind from the visitors. There are boxes of beer, smashed beer bottles. You know, they just, I don't mind people using the rivers and coming here to cool off to the country, but taking care of it is a whole nother thing, and they leave just bags and bags and bags of trash. I know there's a sign, two hundred and fifty dollars for littering. I know that we can't enforce it unless we sent somebody down there on the weekends to actually try to maintain the amount of people that's there in the trash. But the other problem is the defecating in, on the side of the road. They have buckets set up that they're using, because they get there at seven AM in the morning and they don't leave until dark. So like, we were gonna pull a prime for our tractor out of the water, but we can't go there, so we had to go to another place, it's a shipag, to fill our water tanks, which is fine, but the defecating in the buckets, they actually have tents set up and buckets outside, and they're like transferring the buckets out. Where that's going, since they leave their trash, I have no idea, I can only assume and imagine. But there's, they go across the road to defecate and in the woods. And I just feel like, I don't know if the town could possibly try to take that little park back. A lot of, that's been a watering hole for so many of our kids that can't swim, or the little guys on the weekends, that, because it's like, you know, as long as the river's not raging, then it's a great place for the kids to go and cool off, and it's like an asset, since we don't have the town like little watering hole where at the beach. It's an asset for everyone, because the falls is a little dangerous for little kids. So I don't know, I just wanted to put that out there to see if there's a better way that the town can maintain safety, maintain the amount of people that are there, and control the trash issue, because that is a really special little spot, and I hate to see all the broken glass and all of the feces and stuff like that they're leaving behind. I, you know, so those are just my concerns that I have, because as summer on August, it'll be packed every weekend. You know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, if, you can't even get in there, but like, I haven't seen it as bad as I did on Sunday, and that's why I know that I made a post about it in the Roxbury group, just saying, you know, can we do something about this? And there's other residents too, that took pictures. So it's definitely like, we're all becoming more aware of how packed it's being, and just the amount of debris and garbage that's being left behind for us as a town to deal with, because I don't see the state guys coming by and cleaning it up. So if we're gonna have to clean it up anyways, then I don't see why the state should have any control over it, and maybe we can just put the wheels in motion to try to take it back, or enforce it more on our end to keep it safe and clean for all of the residents during the week, but on the weekends, the people that are coming to it too. So, that's just all I have to say.
Do you know, do you know for fact that we gave it to the state? Because I don't remember that.
I do, I, I wanna say Barbara turned it over to the state maybe like four or five years ago, I would.
Was that in a meeting? Was there a meeting, or did she just do that?
I don't know.
Because I would have been opposed to that.
I don't remember all the particulars, Russ. I just know that this has been an ongoing issue ever since she did turn it over to the state.
Well, it kind of, it kind of years ago, we had a big problem down there.
Right.
When it was our park. And there was a gentleman, I think his name was Conrad, I forget his name. He lived on the corner of one one, one ninety-nine and North Street. And he would take care of it, he would take care of the picnic table, take care of things. And what happens is when Squants Pond closes, because they're filled to capacity, they go there, they look for other places, but they've, that's become, you know, with, with social media and stuff, that's become the place where they tell all their other friends to go.
Right, and I mean.
You wouldn't mind them going there, other than they have no respect. And I don't care what, what the color of their skin is, or where they came from, but whoever goes there afterwards, you see garbage, diapers, it's disgusting. Roanoke Falls, they've Roanoke Falls, the state doesn't seem to know what to do there. The town account has closed down Bull's Bridge because of the same issues. And basically, the only way towns are dealing with this is by closing the park to everybody, which, which is really sad. But I think what, what we should do, and what residents should do is call the police. And the town, it'll be up to Pat, and I'm sure Pat will do a great job. We need to talk to the state, there needs to be a minimum there, there's no bathroom facilities, you can't have all-day picnics there. It's really meant to stop by, have a swim, have a little lunch, move on. And it is a danger issue, it's so dangerous, that road is so dangerous. We're waiting for somebody, and a, and unfortunately, it'll probably be a little kid who wanders across the road, somebody's gonna get killed. State needs to do its job. I don't know that we need the park back, we could have that discussion. I, I don't have, I'm not in opposition to taking the park back. If, but if the state's not gonna do its job, then we should be allowed to.
And I know D C W guys are the ones going by and cleaning up the trash.
We did it, we did it this morning. We went over there, and we've been maintaining it, we fixed the park, the picnic tables this year.
Then we should have a say on how many people are there, what's going on down there. I know Barbara, a couple of years ago, we had the same problem. It's every summer, she actually put boulders, so people could not drive in there. And, you know, pack it in, which helps, because as soon as they saw that they didn't have as much space to park, they didn't go, it wasn't like these huge parties all day long. And she, I remember, she had like the town resident trooper like patrolling by there, but like I said, I know the falls is residents only, and so, you know, they make people leave, and maybe that's like the last resort, but if the state's not gonna take care of it, keep it clean for everybody during the week, and like you said, Patrick, we're already maintaining and absorbing the cost of trying to keep it nice for our residents, then something has to be done, because like I said, I have never seen so many cars backed on sixty-seven, and I'm thinking to myself, thank God. I travel back and down the road every day, there's no trucks running, you know, dump trucks, because they fly. And there's no, you know, other things going on with the motorcycles and everything else, because somebody's gonna have a massive accident there, or get killed, like Russ said, and so I just think at this point in time, it's gotten to the point where it's just becoming really gross. And it's sad, because it's a great little spot.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense what Russ said, and have Patrick, maybe we could take a look and see what the status is of that, you know, with the state, and what the expectations are for the cleanup and the monitoring.
I don't remember giving up the park, I don't remember in a meeting, because I would have remembered that.
Maybe she just did it.
I remember it becoming state. Yeah, but I think it was a long time ago, I don't, I don't, I don't recall when.
I'm gonna say maybe five years ago, six, seven years ago, somewhere in there, the transfer took place, because before it wasn't a big thing, and as soon as it got on the state register, like, everybody just, you know, it was like the little diamond in the rough, hiding in the country, and I'm like, it's great, come to the country, but this is clean for a reason, because, you know, take care of it, there's no trash cans, take your garbage. I mean, we were even yelling out the window, take your trash with you, you know, like, don't come here and do that, because it makes a lot of us local residents, you know, irritated.
Right.
So I just wanted to bring that, and I know you guys will take good care of it, you guys have done a great job with the town and everything, so I just wanted to put that out there for myself and the rest of the residents that, you know, have an issue with it.
Thank you so much for bringing up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Meredith, that's a great takeaway. Immediately, we're gonna, tomorrow I'll talk to the police, Meredith, and we'll get extra patrols, we'll make sure that we're monitoring it more, especially on the holidays.
State, I think, Pat.
I will, no, I will, that's gonna be the second side of it, is to follow up and see what kind of, you know, what we should have for expectations for the state, if they're gonna maintain it, they need to maintain it.
Yeah, and if they don't want it, we'll take it back and take care of it, and put rules on it, so people are protected. And I remember the neighbors of Evergreen, you know, complaining that they're going to the bathroom in their yards. So I'm surprised we didn't get complaints from those people, because those people are the ones most affected by it.
Well, like I said, they have buckets and tents set up, and they're hauling the buckets out to the side. Like I said, where they're dumping it, I have no idea, I can only imagine, and I feel really bad for the fish.
Yeah, and the river.
And the river, exactly. And like, you know, Joe and I, like, we pull water from there, and I'm like, we can't pull water from there, because who knows what they were throwing in on our crops, like, you know, so it's like, I don't know, I don't know if it's porta potties, but then who absorbs that cost? And I don't know if it's a dumpster, but then who wants to drive by the country and see porta potties in a dumpster? It's not that big, like Russ said.
Well, it's not a big enough.
You have some lunch, you have a little snack, and you roll, you don't bring cases of Corona and grills and all of this stuff, and just party all day, that's not the spot for that.
Right, right, I agree.
Yeah, it doesn't have the room, it doesn't have the facilities. It was never intended to be what, what they're using it for.
Right.
We need to take it back.
Thanks for letting me talk, and all of you, everybody, have a great day.
Great point, Meredith, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Excellent. Did we have any other communications from the public while we're here? Okay, we'll move on to the next order of business. Conservation Commission, we still do not have person, a person for that position, they're meeting again, I'm hoping that this is the final time that we're gonna have this, hopefully we'll have a appointee next month. Museum Board, still no candidates. So that will also have to be tabled for the next month, as well as inland wetlands, and I believe, Russ, you're doing some research on that, or soliciting at this point, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to well, we'll talk, I mean, Kim, have you heard from Lenora? Has she submitted her resignation?
Um, yes.
Okay.
The Housing Steering Committee, yes.
So we have a couple people interested. And um, we'll move on, and then it'll be up to you, Kim and Pat, to decide who, which of the two or three people who wanna get on the commission, get on it, because I abstain.
Oh, alright.
As I should, as I should.
Of course, of course. Of course, awesome. Okay, and now on to business, so I have Public Works on there, because, you know, as part of our capital improvement plan, we're gonna be working on that building. I've collected a bunch of estimates, actually five of them, for sheet rockers. One came in noticeably different price. So for, we're now going with sheet rock paint, three coats of tape, the walls, cleaning the wall, so the whole place is gonna be freshened up inside.
She runs that garage, correct?
This is the Public Works garage. We're under fifteen thousand, as it stands right now, which is phenomenal, so then the next thing we can work on, we're probably at least a month out on getting that done, just because they're so booked. But they came recommended, and the price was great, so then the next step, we're gonna look at changing the lighting for that. I'm pretty excited about it, as a matter of fact, can't wait to see it.
Wonderful, that's such a needed improvement to that space.
Absolutely agree. Next order of business is on Weller's Bridge, over the last, I guess about two weeks ago, we added more pieces to the speed bumps. Still, the feedback's pretty decent, I think that was the right move, and I thank you guys for your support. We do have one speed sign working, the other speed sign, it's just, it has to be connected with two-phase wire, the prices I'm getting are through the roof, like seven thousand dollars to just hook up the wire. So I'm shopping that out right now. I think that's about it for Weller's Bridge. Next is short-term rentals in town. Kim, do you have any information for us?
Yeah, I, I would like, if you guys wouldn't mind, I'd like to put that off to the next meeting, so I can have more more information, instead of doing it piecemeal, that would be, that would be best, if that's all right.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot on that.
There is a lot, and if you're looking at other towns, there's a lot of looking, going through. I'm finding it with the legislation, even the legislative stuff that's passing right now, just trying to keep up with it, there's a lot, because it's always changing. Okay, next is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that was included with the notes. So part of our what we have to do is, we have joined with the Northwest Hills Council of Government for our mandatory hazard mitigation plan. This is gonna take us from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven. The actual plan, I believe, is about seventy pages long. I do have copies of it here.
It's a hundred and eighty-nine pages.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was a lot, I forgot how much it was.
But I, if I, I know we're supposed to, if I, I'm gonna jump in here, I know that we're supposed to vote on this, but I I'm going to tell you that I cannot vote on it, because I have not had a chance to read it. And I know that I, I really need to be, I need to feel like I'm voting for something that I understand. And I, I just wanted you to be aware, I know that you two can do it, and be two to three perfectly fine, but I just want you to know right off the bat that you know, I got it this morning, and I saw it's nine pages, and I just can't get through it, it's, I would like to have that information a little sooner.
You will notice, it's not, the, the version you have is not the updated version, the updated version will happen with this, so the contacts and things that you'll see in your copy are gonna be Barbara Henry, as well as everyone else, so the one you're looking at is not updated with our information, so, just to let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've read it, and was part of putting it together years ago. But Kim, you really should read it.
I, I will, but I got it this morning, and I can't go through it all, because I, I'm.
Right, there's a lot to read, and there, it, there's no rush, right, Pat?
Um, we actually do need to adopt it, so they can start putting the format together.
Well, don't they give us a month at least, knowing that we meet once a month? I guess they figure we just rubber stamp it?
Yeah, yeah, it, I didn't realize that it needed to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, so we did waste a month with that, I didn't realize that we need to go the board for that approval, so that was my mistake.
Well, would two weeks work for you, Kim?
Yeah.
And then we have a special meeting, and just for that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't even need that much time, I just, you know, when I get back, I just, you know, it came this morning at eight thirty-something, and I can't get through it all, so.
No, and you shouldn't, you gotta be on vacation. And I'm, I'm gone next Friday for two weeks, so it, I guess it's gotta wait till the next meeting, or to the end of the month.
Would we, if we held a quick special meeting in one week, would that be good?
Yeah, as long as it's before the fourteenth.
Okay.
You know, like next. And I don't mind during the day, I mean, this is gonna be a quick.
Yeah, exactly, it's fine for me, too, doesn't have to be at night.
Okay, do you wanna do something like a two o'clock?
That's, that's fine with me.
Or do you, like, what's, what's good for you, Russ? I'm, I'll be completely open.
To, on Tuesday?
Tuesday the twelfth, you know, anytime really, four o'clock, whenever you'd like it.
Oh, let's do later, is that better?
I gotta, can I email you tomorrow? Because I know I have to bring my son somewhere on Tuesday. I think it's at eight o'clock.
Okay.
And then I gotta get down to New Haven. Let me look at my calendar tomorrow, and I could give you a date.
Sounds good, okay.
Listen, so you guys know I don't have service, I'm, that's why I'm sitting in a truck. So you to, you decide, and I'm fine with whatever you decide for that.
And in the backseat, no, us.
No, I'm in the front seat, I'm in the driver's.
Okay. Okay.
The Home Depot parking lot.
Yep, you got it.
Okay, so we will, I will be in contact with you guys tomorrow for that. All right, Town Hall upgrades, the kitchen cabinets are in, the flooring is in tomorrow, they will template for the new countertops. And then it's just a question to get any appliances installed, and the tile backsplash installed, the lighting finished up, and it should be wrapped up, and then we can start on the bathrooms, which is the second, second part of that phase, that'll probably be a fall thing at that point. Housing Plan Steering Committee, I have it on here, Kim, did you have any updates?
Um, yeah, I just wanted you guys to know that the, the final draft has been finished, is, is sent off the Planning Commission, July fourteenth. It will, they will look at it, discuss it, and it'll be open to the public to have final comments on it. It is currently on the town website. And after the Planning Commission meeting, and the public has a chance to comment, we'll make any other adjustments necessary, and then it has to go, be posted for thirty-five days. And after that, then we, as the Board of Selectmen, can vote on it, and then it goes to the town for a vote. So it looks like we would probably be doing that vote for the town in September, and probably a board meeting in, in September, and then a town vote right after that. So.
Well, great job with that, Kim, thank you, I know you've been working on this for like a year now, it's hard to believe. We're, well, by the time we go to town vote, it'll be, it'll be a year.
Oh, you're right, oh my gosh, you're right.
So, job, job well done.
Thank you.
Um, okay, next on the agenda, I just wanted to announce that we did receive a grant from the Connecticut Community Foundation for the town of Roxbury to create a resource booklet for Roxbury seniors. So it's gonna be kind of a directory of services that are provided in the area, and different areas that can help for anyone, so there is a committee on that, it's the Council on Aging that's working on that with Sue Stoffaker. They're doing a great job, and I just wanted to give them kudos, and even a grant involved, so that's even better, so that will now head to finalization and, and production at that point. Um, okay, Bridge Culvert update. So last, so seventeenth of June, they started the Davenport Culver, it's all ripped out, the main arch came out today. The ETA is still gonna be, they're trying to get this done prior to the beginning of school, which is very exciting. But that's, they do have somebody from Cardinal onsite at all times, just to kind of monitor it. I know it got a little messy for a little while, so we gave them staging areas to stage dirt and some other materials down at Sherman Park while they're completing that project. But, you know, so far, so good, we've been checking on them on a daily basis. Squire Road Culver, Wetlands approved, the pipe is ordered, assuming the pipe comes in, we're looking to start that on July twenty-fifth.
Oh, good.
Um, Botsford, that did go out for a, an RFP, so a press for pricing. That ends on July fifteenth, I have some interest in that, so we should, we may see some extra bids that will come in for that one. Again, that's gonna be this summer to rebuild. I had a talk today, I had a, a meeting, and Kim, you're probably gonna remember this name, Jim Otis, from the state on Weller's Bridge. Kim and I had had a presentation from the state, and what the state is proposing is through the federal local bridge program, that the state would design it and oversee the whole program. I was waiting to hear to see if the, there was going to be extra infrastructure money, pleased to announce that happened. So I'm going to be working with Jim Otis and his team, and we'll probably start at least talking about, you know, what the designs look like. Nothing extra can be added on the hundred percent. But if we do have a plan, for instance, we wanted to have a walkway to connect the conservation areas that we have, that are for the land trust. And as long as there's a plan with the conservation, that can be included with it. Because again, it's a hundred percent, that may not include the pretty stone facades or anything like that. But they're gonna work with us, and I'm pretty confident with that, so I'm interested to see what they come up with. But we will start moving ahead with the state, just try and get that designed. As they say, it's probably not gonna be till two thousand twenty-five or twenty-six, that we'll be actually completing that. But this is a large project, again, we're looking over four million dollars for this project, because the, it's, it's eroding behind the footings. So the fact that this is gonna be a hundred percent is just absolutely amazing.
That's wonderful news, oh my gosh. A possibility, and maybe almost, but it's best to know that it's for sure, so.
I, I've been chasing this infrastructure bill for a while, watching the monitoring on that, and, and I will say, we got kudos from them, they were like, wow, you were smart enough to wait, and, and now we're in a good position, so you know, the town sees the benefit in that, so I'm pretty excited.
I'm sorry. About the aesthetics of the bridge, as you kind of alluded to, I mean, I, I think it would be important, because it is sort of a, those sort of gateway, you know, into into our community, and I, it is important, I think.
Well, there was a couple of things that I had, I had brought up about that, because I, I felt like, you know, instead of the steel guardrails, I think the wood, you know, the laminated wood, where they're like a foot by eight inches, you know, adds a little bit, you know, a nicer character to it, they said, oh, absolutely, that's an easy thing to pick, that's an easy thing to go through. So like, some of the aesthetic things that I asked, even for the details, they were very supportive of, and they thought that it was the right thing to do, because that's what's there now, so obviously, we're gonna try and get the best possible, if there are any additions, of course, I would come to the board and, 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 you know, as we have options, I'll bring it to you, to let you know where the, you know, where the progress is going.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Minor Bridge Culver, and still kind of holding back on that for the same reason of the infrastructure money. They, the state has signaled that there's going to be, instead of a fifty percent local bridge program from the state, that they're gonna increase that possibly to eighty, which would be amazing, so I'm kind of watching that legislation as well, to see where that kind of follows. Right now, at fifty percent, you know, the, the bridge is estimated at one point eight four two, for that bridge, one point eight four two million. If, if we got any, one of our, our, a town share of that is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, so anything extra would just be phenomenal for the town.
Right.
And that's it for basically what bridges we're working on, you know, next year, we're gonna be looking at more, you know, Bacon Road has a lot of culverts, or some other ones, but as of now, this is what we we need to get accomplished this year. Budget capital expenses, you know, truck aid is being worked on, and the loader, all the parts are in, including the radiator that we were waiting for, so we can start working on that as well. Also, picking in Fiddlin' is this weekend, so we've done a lot of clearing around the rock wall, the rock wall at the park is almost all exposed. We've been cleaning up Weller's Bridge, Rocky Mountain, the, the job, they're doing a great job down there. We have our seasonal employee, Jim Gillette, who's been down there with a weed whacker and cutting everything back, and, you know, once it gets cut, it's dying right now, so it's starting to expose all that stone wall. And we're kind of starting to do the same thing around Weller's Bridge and Rocky Mountain, where it hits Weller's Bridge, it's Rocky Mountain.
Always been such a beautiful vista, and that's why the town agreed to purchase that as open space, so it would be wonderful to have that come back to what it was.
I couldn't agree with you more, and, and I appreciate whatever kind of feedback I get, if you can stay supportive. You never know what, what people are gonna think about that, but I think the rock wall, I think those stone walls down there are, are, you know, even though they're not built up and pretty, it's still great to see, especially around the park, and especially up at the top of the hill, so thanks to the Public Works for helping out with that as well. Okay, so, next is, unless there were any questions on any of that. Okay. Fire Marshall report for July two thousand twenty-two, it's pretty simple, they're continuing to work on, at, with Second Act Farm on their sprinkler system correction. Also, they're running certified, state certified training classes, and then they're also, she's also attending a fireworks class as well. And then there was a tent inspection completed on. as well, um, and then there was a tent inspection completed on tow fit for a wedding. And that's the Fire Marshal report. Um, Resident Trooper, um, for criminal investigations, for criminal, non-criminal, uh, eight accidents, one DUI, four infractions, fifteen warnings, um, and two hundred and twenty-four miscellaneous requests. Uh, definitely infractions and warnings are, uh, starting to go down, we're still, uh, short, uh, coverage. Um, Joe Witkowski, uh, has been adding, uh, shifts and Jason, um, so we're trying to get some more coverage, but we are still, uh, very short uh, without, without Bill with us, uh, at the time. Um, and then, uh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, we're continuing to work with, uh, Booth Free School on interior and exterior cameras. And Matt is, uh, trying to make sure that those, those cameras are visible at the troop. Um, barring any emergency situations, we'll be able to view exterior cameras on a normal basis. Uh, in the event of an emergency, Region Twelve's IT person, Vic Vincenzi, uh, will grant acts, uh, access to the interior cameras when it goes live. Um, but it's, uh, nice to know that, uh, he's, he's, you know, working on the school visibility part of it. Uh, notable events, um, just, you know, a reminder for people to lock their cars and don't leave any valuables in their cars. Uh, and if they see anything suspicious, call nine-one-one immediately, there was a little bit more activity this week, this, uh, this month. Um, so he wants to make sure that we're gonna continue that communication in our local emails and town communication. Um, other than that, everything else seems to be under control, the Town Hall has been busy between, uh, transfer station permits and dog permits and everybody coming to pay their taxes, um, it's definitely been a busy place. Uh, I will say that we had, uh, more transfer station permits issued this year, uh, than any to this point. Um, Melanie was fantastic, and kudos to Melanie, uh, who was our, you know, helper for that, she was up at the, at, uh, the transfer station every day for an entire month, so three days a week for an entire month, uh, and she did a wonderful job, so, uh, I, you know, definitely kudos to her for that. Um, any other business?
I'd just like to add to the, yeah, oh, sorry, I, I just wanted to add to the, um, Housing Steering Committee. Um, as an offshoot from that, you know, one of the recommendations was to start a housing authority. And we have several residents who have decided to come together, and right now, it's under Charlie Stoffaker's leadership. Um, and he's been doing a great job, I have attended two, uh, organizational meetings on that because I am chairing the plant, you know, the, uh, the Steering Committee, and I wanted to be there for support. Um, when it becomes official, I won't be able to be part of that, because it will be a conflict of interest. But I have been very upfront with them to let them know that, support, you know, anything that they need. So they have used the Town Hall for two meetings, and then I think they're gonna move to the Congregational Church, um, for their, their future meetings. So I just wanted you to know that that was underway, and they're all very excited about it, so.
Great job.
Okay.
Russ?
Uh, I wanted to ask about the bathrooms, did you check into if we run out the park, whether the bathrooms are close to the public?
The bathrooms are not close to the public.
Okay, so that's a rumor.
That is, well, um, there was a different situation, uh, but it didn't have to do with that. Um, they did understand that the bathrooms are public, and it actually includes it in their rental, that those bathrooms are for the public.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll, I'll let the person know who kind of got accosted of that.
Got it, got it, yeah, that is not, the, the rule is that the public is allowed to use those bathrooms.
Okay.
Um, and I will also bring up, since other, other business, since it came up last meeting, um, I've asked several, uh, local farmers. Um, I, I'm not getting interest in any kind of farmer's market at this, at this moment, I don't really have people that are necessarily.
Yeah, they're, they're, they've done that, um, Olivia Cody did her senior project, doing the farmer's market across the street. And what she found is a lot of them weren't in, weren't, they did it that day, but they weren't into anything long term, so.
And that's what it is, and there's a lot others that are very successful in Brookfield and New Milford, and, and there's a lot of them that are around that have, um, and even the one in Woodbury is having a hard time finding people, you know, it becomes more of a flea market than it does, you know, a farmer's market. Um, so they're, they're just, it, it, there's a lot of interest in it, but not necessarily here, um, we just don't have a lot of traffic or through traffic, if you will.
Right.
So I just wanted to let you know that I was following up with that, you know, should, should, should something change, or somebody expresses more of an interest, or we can get some bodies together, you know, that'd be good, but we want it to be successful.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, all right, any other business?
Nope.
Is this a record?
I, I ran a selectman meeting once, and it was eight minutes long.
That's great.
That's excellent, that's excellent.
All right, I'll make a motion adjourn.
Okay, I second.
All in favor? Have a great vacation, Ross, enjoy your time.
Well, I've talked to you before then.
Yeah, cuz we're gonna be, yes.
That's right, that's right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a great night.